Ray, we were looking very strongly at, we wanted the ability to have that under the city's control 24/7.
Yeah.
And so, as in most negotiations, you give a little to get a little. And that's what we came up with, but I wanted a more fully briefed counsel on it before it was, before you tonight.
Okay. So, the implication now is we're going to, I was on the impression, I think I had the conversation with Ray six, seven months ago, that we weren't selling all those leases. Is that the case, or no? It's full all the time, right?
No, that's what our revenue is showing, is that it's not full all the time.
Not full all the time.
And part of that was because of, I felt was because of the restriction. You know, some business people that work uptown and work a normal business day, sure, they could lease that until it wasn't available to them after 6:00, it didn't matter. Or on Sundays. It was still okay to them, they had a guaranteed good parking spot. But to some other people, say, that lived in the uptown area, in a fraternity or sorority house, or a rooming house, that didn't have adequate parking.
It wasn't useful, strong.
It wasn't any use to them. They wouldn't consider to lease that. Where I felt that maybe, at least during the academic year, we hopefully would have it fully leased. And we'll know that probably by the end of the week, because now is the time everybody's renting their parking spaces.
Okay. And last question, in terms of the cost for parking space for the police department, is that coming out of their budget, or is that just internal, or is that general?
It's coming out of the parking enforcement, you know, general fund. That's where we've got the lease right now.
The cost, okay.
Rather than police department, it's, you know, the parking enforcement fund cost.
So, the thing that we were trying to gain by this was that 24/7 access, rather than just a daytime parking space.
And we still have five spots for the church, I see, right?
I didn't want to give that out.
No, I didn't think so.
Okay, any further questions? Transportation is completed.
On to planning and development.
Okay.
Debbie Hall, chairing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have on the agenda this evening is related to our cable franchise, and it's on the Planning and Development Committee agenda, because there's a related issue with right-of-way that we're going to end up talking about in the near future. You may recall Senate Bill 117, which changed the rules for cable franchising in Ohio. We discussed it when that was pending in the legislature. It was amended, so some of the things that cities were most concerned about, I think, have been improved, but there, it is still a pretty significant change, where cable franchising is going to be done by the Commerce Department at the state level. What we have before us that we need to do really soon is, through our existing franchise agreement, we're allowed to maintain that and still get our franchise fee if we pass an ordinance saying that we would still like to get our franchise fee. And we have to do that before September 23rd, which is the effective date of the law. So, that's why we're going to be, it has an emergency clause attached to it, and we'll be asking for a suspension of the rules on that this evening. I'm not an expert on this, and Gary's here now, so if he wants to add more, that would be great.
Yeah, I can outline for you some of the changes. The important one, as Debbie mentioned, is the matter dealing with cable franchise fees. The Senate Bill 117, which is now higher revised code, Chapter 1332, provides that expiring franchise fees can only be maintained if the city council adopts an ordinance saying they desire to maintain them up to their existing level. And we have it in our Athens City Code, that our franchise fee is 5%. So, it's not in our franchise agreement, it's in our Athens Code, which we did a long time ago. And as a result of that, we can maintain it if we do an ordinance saying we want to maintain it. The other important thing to remember about the definition of gross receipts has changed in the favor of cable operators, so we may see some reduction in the amount of fees that are paid to the city of Athens as a result of change of definition of gross revenues. We had a very broad definition in our code ordinances, and they're knocking out fees and taxes and et cetera. One important thing that we can keep that's in the ordinance tonight is advertising revenues. Again, the law says you can only keep that if you so designated an ordinance that you want to keep the advertising revenues. So, we put in the ordinance that we want to keep the advertising revenues. It's really kind of a minefield for cities. You have to do the ordinance saying you want to keep these things, and then after you get a notice from the cable company that they want to be the new service provider pursuant to the new state law, you have 10 days to notify them that you have in fact enacted an ordinance saying you want to keep these fees. Since the ordinance, or the state law, becomes effective on September 23rd, we need to be in, have this enacted tonight, so that my office can give the appropriate notice, when I expect to receive notice from Time Warner, probably on the 24th of September. I can outline for you a couple other changes that are in the law that are, it is, Debbie is right, it moderates a little bit towards cities, but still, it's not as good as it was before. Cable companies are now able to transfer their interests from one cable company to another without city approval. Previously, we had to approve, transfer from one cable company to another. We can't require video services as part of an agreement anymore, that's all negotiated by the state. The big area in PEG channels, public access channels, only three are really protected under the law. We currently have four in Athens that are in use, so only three of them are protected at their current location on the lower tier. The way I read the law, and it's fairly complicated, the fourth one can be moved to a higher tier if Time Warner wants to do that, so they could pick one of our four PEG channels and move it to a higher tier if they so choose. The other issues that are there are the issues of continuing to operate PEG channels and the original programming that's required under the act. And it's fairly complicated, and I'm not going to go into it tonight, but suffice it to say that there's a significant requirement for local programming to maintain an obligation for PEG channels. We're not allowed to require money for equipment for operating PEG channels anymore, so I think Scott would know better. I think we had $25,000 was given to the city several years ago for PEG channels for equipment. That will not be forthcoming to us anymore. We can't require the construction of institutional networks. Another big change is, we can't, we can still require an audit once every year, but the city has to pay for the audit, completely pay for an audit anymore, if you want to do an audit. And if you choose not to do an audit, they created a two-year statute of limitations as to the fees paid to the city, so that if you don't audit and challenge it within a two-year timeframe, you can't challenge what they previously paid you for franchise fees, whether they're correct or not correct. I don't know what we want to do there, because I suspect that's a $5,000, $10,000 fee to do audits, quite frankly. There are others changes, but I think those are probably the significant ones that I think affect us. The other thing that happened under the Senate Bill 117, of course, is the state's going to negotiate statewide franchises and allow the use of public right-of-ways for video service providers. It's not just cable companies, but video service providers. Most cities don't have specific right-of-way ordinances. The law does not aggregate the right of local government to control its public right-of-ways in other, as long as it's uniformly applied to all utilities, for all people that try to open the public right-of-way. So, for the last month or so, my office has been looking at various right-of-way ordinances, and we really only came across about two or three in the state of Ohio, Columbus and Dublin, which are really detailed ordinances. And recently, which Debbie is naming, where we came across one in Worthington, which is a much shorter version of a thing. I, that's the one that my office is currently working and trying to work up for a draft for city council, Debbie, and we probably would have it for you by the end of this week, early part of next week. The big issue there is, and of course, as the mayor knows, one of the issues is controlling the opening of the right-of-way, so that we don't have to keep repairing streets as people become more and more used to burying their utilities, rather than having an over-hit situation. You don't want to have your, you don't want to pave a street and only have somebody go through and open it up, and patch it instead of repairing the whole street, et cetera. But the big issue, of course, is fees, right-of-way fees. The law provides that if a franchise fee is being paid by a service, video service provider, that that has to be offset against any right-of-way fee. But there still might be other, you know, gas company, or electric company, or somebody like that, that wouldn't be paying a specific franchise fee as a video service provider. But the law also states that if you charge a fee, you have to submit it to the PUCO.
That's a fee for use of the right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. That's my understanding. I'm trying to get clarification from the PUCO, I haven't got a specific clarification on that issue yet. Because my question was, do we even have to submit it to you if we don't have any fees? And I haven't got a definite answer back from them yet, but I think the answer is no, if we don't have fees. But certainly if we have fees, it goes to the PUCO. And at least I'm hearing from municipalities that have been there, that it's a very rigorous justification process you go through to make sure that you're charging only cost reimbursement for your fees. Which, again, as the mayor well knows, we had some studies done to try to justify costs and stuff in the city. That was one of the reasons, we talked about a right-of-way ordinance, I mean, several years ago. My time escapes me, at least eight or nine years ago, something. And one of the problems we had was the issue of fees and justification of those fees and so forth. So, I'll give you a draft ordinance, I'm going to leave it up to you to decide whether or not you want to deal with the issue of fees, and be aware that if we get into that, it should be a protracted discussion with the PUCO.
And I will add that I've also asked the law director's office to look at what we can do in terms of pruning and tree trimming that utilities do to maintain the rights-of-way, because that's been an ongoing issue in the community. So, if there's something that we can include in the ordinance about that, even prior to renegotiating the particular easements with AEP, to look at ANSI standards, and, you know, some of the recommendations from the Tree Commission, that would be something that would be really good to incorporate in this. Did you have something, Paul?
Just one, a couple of questions. One is, does this particular ordinance we're doing, do we have to do that yearly, or is this a one-shot deal?
Well, as I understand it, it's just a one-shot.
Okay.
Although, I don't say anything with real definiti, because it applies to 117, because it was amended, clarified, ninth hour, and it's fairly complicated. But at least my reading of it at the moment is, it would just be, we would give the notice once upon being notified by presumably Time Warner, if they want to be the service provider for us.
So, we might actually have to come back and renegotiate this, or amend this, if they come back with something different?
No.
No.
No, it's just our option to give notice that, we, we did not put the actual franchise fee in the franchise document with Continental Cable Base, which was later Time Warner. We put it in an ordinance. We have a, it's either telecommunications, or I can't remember the exact title that we gave it. But that's where the franchise fee is, in city ordinance, not in the franchise document with Time Warner, which is expiring. So, it's not something we chose to negotiate, we just said, this is the fee we're allowed to charge, and what we are charging.
Okay. I guess the question I'm thinking is, is somebody going to, is this going to be changed again along the way? It's pretty much done, and nobody's going to try allowing to bring it back to where it was.
Well, I can't tell you than that. My guess is that it's probably not going to be revisited, probably, for a number of years. But I, that's just a guess on my part.
Okay. I just wondered.
Okay. There are no further questions on this. I don't have any miscellaneous items for planning and development. Does anyone else have anything for right now? Okay, then we're adjourned.
I call to order the regular session of Athens City Council for Tuesday, September 4th, 2007. We do have a quorum with five of seven members present, and we expect a sixth member presently. Next item on our agenda is disposition of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes of June 4th, June 18th, July 2nd, July 16th, and the special sessions of July 9th, July 12th, and August 6th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The minutes have been accepted. Communications, are there any communications that any member of council would like to share? I can't believe it.
I do have.
Law Director Hunter.
I do have one. I would request council add an executive session tonight for purposes of labor negotiations.
We already have a special session, or an executive session scheduled for real estate. We'll add labor negotiations to that subject. Those are two of the things that the law does allow city council to go out of session and discuss, out of sunshine and discuss. Yes, Paul?
I do notice in our mailbox, we got a liquor transfer license. Is that appropriate time to do this?
I would usually do that towards the end.
It's dated 8/27.
Got quite a stack, let me find it.
Yeah.
Okay. Paul, are you making a motion at this time?
Yeah. Oh, well, just, just to let people know about it. Yes. You want me to talk about it?
Sure. We can call this communications from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control.
And this is for a transfer from Union Street Market LLC, now to Union Street Market LLC, from Court Street Management, and in both the same place, being 26 West Union Street. And it says it's a transfer of a C1 and a C2 license, and it's dated 8/27, and any responses must be postmarked 9/27.
Okay. Any comments?
These are obviously carryout licenses.
Yes. Okay. Reports from communications from other elected officials. Law Director Hunter, anything in addition to all that?
Well, I do see it laying here, I don't know if that counsel the, and I don't know where we are on, so I just mentioned it, Debbie, is the development agreement for Old Sir, was brought back to my attention, I don't know, but that's up in Council's bailiwick now.
I found it in my box, I have not read it.
It's getting to the point, if I may comment, that a development agreement is usually set up so that until the annexation occurs, the proposed property that's being developed will receive some degree of city services. And they're under construction, but I think the 60-day window is done now, isn't it?
Yes, it is. It's being laid before council tonight. So, yeah, I was confused.
I don't know that it's really necessary, I mean, we have to look at what's in the development agreement, but if they're going to be annexed about the same time as we would do a development agreement.
Yes.
I'm not sure, you'd have to look at the clauses in there to see what would be to the advantage of the city.
It's my intention to put it on my committee agenda for next week, if we need to talk about it. I think that we had some problems with a development agreement that acknowledged and expected request for a variance prior to annexation, and I see that that's in this draft, so I think we do need to talk about it, and it's probably more appropriate for a committee meeting.
I, yeah, I was just mentioning it, it came in, I didn't.
Yeah.
I've been handed two files on annexation, and I guess there's only designation for annexation request onto your committee, so I would assume we'll be able to discuss that next week.
Mm-hmm.
Very good.
I have nothing else?
Anything else?
Nothing else I know of.
Thank you for that. Mayor Abel.
Well, while you were gone, we finished up a lot of the work activity. The water portion of the Columbus Road project is done, the sewer portion is not. We are still waiting, I think it's now scheduled for September 12th, for AEP to do the underground electric to the pump house. I think we, even when you, you know, you pay the money to get it relocated, it's sometimes months before AEP can get it scheduled. This is what's happened in this case. We still have had some complaints from citizens in that area. We are, have invited some of them, and alerted them that we're going to be doing a walkthrough with the project engineer and contractor, I believe, on the 7th. So, the various property owners have been notified of that, and a timeline that we would, we would be adhering to, so hopefully we can address all of their concerns. The paving projects are all done. It was interesting to see, if any of you saw it, on the brick project on West Union, or East Union Street, it was very labor-intensive. Andy has compiled the costs for that, and, but it was a process, if I may remind you, that we went down to the soil and mixed in a percentage of concrete powder with it, and the machine came out, and it was all gooey before the machine came there, and then it was real solid afterwards. Pretty amazing process. And then we had to, so you had to, you know, the labor intensity was removing all the brick, removing imperfections from that, like asphalt or other problems, then relaying the base, stacking them, redoing it. So, the labor costs in this were pretty high. But it does give us an idea of what it takes to do that. We'll try at least one more project on that, if the issue won is successful, and then we would have a pretty good idea of things.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I just want to say, I've said it to the street department already, but I, cost aside, it's an excellent job.
Oh, boy.
It's a great street.
I appreciate that. And also, as you noticed, the last few weeks have been done with painting of curbs and crosswalks and all those things, except on East State Street, they got a little wide and got a little bit of roadway there by the island. But they did put in a lot of effort this summer to do those, do all those projects. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Questions for the mayor? City Auditor Kathy Heck?
Well, I guess I'd just like to say that at the council retreat, we talked about a lot of things, and there were several requests for information that my office has been working on, and I have most of it. We'll probably have it in your boxes by the end of the week. And if you need anything else, just let me know.
On behalf of council, thanks for all the time that you gave us, and all the information, and taking part in the discussion.
Thanks.
Questions for the auditor? On to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 8707, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title IX, General Regulations, Chapter 9.12, Streets and Sidewalks, Section 9.12.22, Sidewalks and Gutters, Enforcement Program, Member Wile.
Adoption of oh, 8707.
Second.
Okay, this is the attempt to actually get the litter cleaned up off the curb and the sidewalk to about 18 inches off. This was brought up from the Clean Committee about two years ago, maybe, two and a half, suggested also by Steve Pearson at the time as well. This is one of the several recommendations that came out of the Clean Committee, including our solid waste litter control officer. So, this is just another tool. How it is going to be used is up to the administration, and again, I don't know how fast it will be put into use. We amended this, we started this. First reading was July 2nd.
Mr. President, I have heard from some constituents about this, particularly people who live in well-traveled areas near convenience stores, who expressed a lot of concern about how practical this is for a homeowner who lives in the, in the range from a convenience store that it takes people to get their cigarette package unwrapped, where they throw the thing out the window, and how frequently, you know, he's going to have to get out there and pick up other people's trash that is, you know, in his yard or next to his yard. I mean, this is somebody who is a resident, who I think maintains their yard really well, but just a lot of concern that there are things that are completely beyond their control. And, you know, I've just heard from some people who feel like it's an unfair kind of burden.
I really don't know how to address that, except there, short of having somebody tracking down every person who drops something. I mean, if we could have immediate, you know, prosecution or arrest of somebody, or finding of somebody who drops that cigarette wrapper down. Again, part of the thing is that we have, the tendency we are trying to address at this time was the, the idea that somebody's stuff is in the yard, and when it glows out into the curb, it ceases to be theirs. And I think that was the concern when we put this together, at least the Clean Committee put together.
Member Bishop.
I was thinking that this was, I've been hot for the summer, primarily uptown. This is citywide?
Yes.
Okay. Because I can see it in commercial areas, where that's the purpose of the area, is buying and selling and traffic. I have to say, I share, you know, the residential concern about picking up other people's trash. I mean, I like, I think we should become a clean city, but I'm very pro in the, this is interesting, I'm watching myself on TV, and I'm doing.
There is a delay tonight, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, in case you say something off.
Do your best not to look at the monitors, it's very disconcerting.
I won't look at the monitors, I thought, what are we doing? Okay, so, as I say, the commercial area, I think it's really critically important for.
Other comments? Member Sands?
Mr. President, I expressed some concern in the early discussion about this ordinance, about the feasibility of cleaning under that 18 inches when there's cars parked there a lot. As an over-20-year resident and business owner on East State Street, I just always assumed that if trash appeared in my area, it was mine to clean up, I didn't try to identify who put it there. But I, with that misgiving, I wanted to say, with that misgiving, I'm still going to vote for this ordinance, because I think it's a commendable goal, and we'll work on it. If it doesn't work, I have full faith that we'll make changes to help it work better.
Are there other comments?
Yes.
Yes, Member Patterson?
Mr. President, my feeling on this is that trash in streets and everywhere has been one of the top issues in Athens for the last couple of years. Someone has to be responsible for it to change it. So, having it be the person who owns or is responsible for the property adjacent makes perfect sense to me. I mean, somebody's got to, and it's like the same idea of businesses being responsible for the sidewalks in front of their business, as well as the street. And personally, having traveled excessively this summer, and watched in many big cities, constantly, there is someone from the business cleaning the street all day long, 6:00 in the morning, hosing it down and so on. And just someone needs to be responsible in both the residential's and the business areas.
Mr. President?
Yes, but, Member Phillips?
And I do understand that this was a recommendation of the Clean Committee, which included representatives of the neighborhood associations, representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, and, you know, folks from the city working on this. I would just want us to have some period of time in mind that we will come back and review how it's working, whether it's, you know, helping us deal with litter, or whether it's, it's been difficult to, you know, be fair with it. So, I just hope that we'll keep thinking about this and pay attention to those issues.
Member Bishop?
Carol brought up other cities, and this is a radical thing. But when I was in Washington, there were people who were, take, removing gum from the sidewalk, spraying it with something, and scraping it off. Now, that sounds like an outrageous thing, but it keeps the city clean. And so, maybe there's a way to have some community service, you know, maybe some of the people who are required to do community service can, heaven forbid, start getting rid of some of the gum. If you can do it in Washington, you know, maybe we can start doing that here, since you brought up other cities. I would like to make that suggestion to the community service people.
Other comments? Yes, Member Wile?
In terms of this ordinance, I fully don't expect it to be used immediately, it's just another tool to try cleaning the city. It's just another tool to try cleaning the city. Of course, I know our litter control officer has many things on his plate, just has to look at the move in today and the educational curve that has to be dealt with with new tenants and, you know, seventy percent of the city. So I look at it as just something that will be a goal towards utilizing to some areas that are problem areas. I don't anticipate full enforcement, and I don't anticipate immediate enforcement. I think we had a discussion during hiring the litter control officers. Eventually, somewhere down the line, we'd get a report from him on how things were going. So maybe at that point, we can bounce this off him and have him review whether he thinks it's, the word I heard is he thought it was a good idea, but see how it shakes out at that time.
One more thing.
Member Bishop?
I'm just going to say that I am going to vote for this and hope that we enforce it, at least in some of the commercial areas, and not say, let's pass it and it may not get enforced. I think we have to pass it with the intention that we will enforce it, certainly in the worst areas, and maybe work with citizens for whom this is a, you know, a real problem because it's not their trash.
Other comments from other members of council? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance eighty-seven oh seven?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is that the ordinance has been adopted. Onto ordinances for first reading, ordinance ninety-nine oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the two thousand and eight state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for issue one funds and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. This was to be introduced by Member Flowers. We'll look to Member Patterson to speak to it, but I'd like the record to show that our sixth member of council has now joined the meeting.
Perfect timing. Mr. President, I move for suspension on ninety-nine oh seven.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is the September fourteenth deadline.
Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of the suspension?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-nine oh seven.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ninety-nine oh seven.
Second.
This ordinance is for issue one funds, and it's authorizing the mayor to submit application immediately, and the intention is for Carpenter Street improvements and whatever else comes along with that.
Motion and second, further discussion. Member Wile?
Carpenter Street, good idea.
Other comments? All those, are we suspending or adopting? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance ninety-nine oh seven?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. One month, and I'm totally out of cycle, aren't I? Ordinance one hundred oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a lease with the First Presbyterian Society of Athens, Ohio, for the rental of in-laws numbers fifteen and seventeen in the city of Athens and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Patterson?
Mr. President, I move for suspension on one hundred oh seven.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that the Presbyterian Church would like to get paid.
That's hard to argue with. Member Wile?
And the lease has expired.
And the lease has expired. Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending council rules, ordinance one hundred oh seven?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of one hundred oh seven.
Second.
Motion and second?
This ordinance is to, for the Safety Service Director to execute a lease with the First Presbyterian Church in terms of the parking. It was discussed in committee just a few minutes ago. The only significant change to the agreement is that the parking agreement has changed from daytime parking to twenty-four-seven parking.
Member Sands?
And there's a, there is.
And the amount has changed, yes. All details.
Details, details. Basically, a three percent annual increase is what's been requested by the leaseor. Further discussion on ordinance one hundred oh seven. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance one oh one oh seven, an ordinance closing the southern portion of Kurt Street on Saturday, September fifteenth oh seven, from three P M. to seven P M. for a community cookout and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Patterson?
Mr. President, I, do I need to move, or do I make a motion to withdraw? To withdraw one oh one oh seven.
Second.
Motion and a second, we discussed this in committee, quick reason.
Basically, the reason is because we're not sure of the ownership of Kurt Street, and it is the belief that it belongs to Ohio University, and so it would be irrelevant for us to close it.
So to close something we don't own would be rather presumptuous, doesn't it?
Yes.
Motion and second, Paul?
I would, almost hesitant to do this, because if it turns out we do own it, then we'd have to reintroduce this. But at the same time, I suspect it's a used property.
Okay. It's next week.
So you're not going to reintroduce it?
Yeah, so I wouldn't worry too much about it. Both sides, once it's closed, I can't believe we can't put up a couple barricades and call it a picnic. Member Bane?
I just wonder if it's, knowing the size of it, if it's big enough for what we had last year? And why argue with something that works well? If the guy wasn't here who wants it closed and even knew how it went last year, I mean, we should say, gee, we had more people than fit on that street last year. Because it's very short, and it's very tight to the houses, and all the people would have hamburgers smell in their houses, whether they wanted it or not.
So are you moving for?
I'm moving it, I'm glad you've.
Well, then let's withdraw this. Okay, motion second, and probably way too much discussion for a motion to withdraw, but all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been withdrawn. Ordinance one oh two oh seven, an ordinance amending the two thousand and seven appropriation ordinance. What are you doing there, Mr. Sands?
Mr. President, ordinance one oh two oh seven has two parts to it. The first part appropriates from the unappropriated balance, five hundred nineteen thousand thirty-four dollars and forty cents, appropriates it to the sewer fund, seven fifty. Before we, to understand why we're doing this, we need to look at ordinance one oh three oh seven. We are appropriating money to pay off note of a loan that we have, and then we will authorize reissuing the note in this next ordinance. So that's where this money is, that's what this money is involved with. And the second part is four thousand dollars appropriated to the tourism fund, Fund Two Twelve, to purchase the bike racks for buses, as Councilmember Patterson talked about earlier in committee meeting. As I understand it, we don't need to suspend on these at this time. And if you have further questions, we will have a finance committee meeting next week also. Are there further questions?
Ordinance one oh three oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the auditor to renew the note authorized by ordinance oh ninety-six oh six, meet city obligations in the sewer fund and declaring an emergency. Again, member Sands?
Mr. President, as I alluded earlier, ordinance one oh three oh seven authorizes the auditor to re-enter a note agreement with a lender for five hundred thousand dollars to meet the obligations that we owe for some work that we've done in the sewer fund previously. If you'll look between these two ordinances, one oh two and one oh three, you'll see that what we're actually doing is paying the interest which has accrued over the past year on this one.
Further comments on ordinance one oh three? Ordinance one oh four oh seven, an ordinance, pardon me, an ordinance certifying to the Athens County Auditor for placement upon the tax duplicate, the cost of removing a condemned house located at seventeen and a half, South Lancaster Street. Member Sands?
Excuse me, Mr. President, I'm not sure, I hadn't talked about this one. Do we need to suspend on this?
Yes.
Mr. President, at this time, I move that we consider ordinance one oh four oh seven under suspension of the rules.
Do we have a second? Member Wile? Okay, let's. Okay. We hear you. Prior to your suspension, why don't we consider an emergency clause for one oh four, since I have been informed by the Clerk and Law Director that this has to be to the county auditor's office by Friday? If I ask that motion, Mr. Sands?
Certainly, Mr. President. At this time, I move that we amend ordinance one oh four oh seven to add an emergency clause.
Second.
For all the reasons discussed.
Yeah. All those in favor of amending ordinance one oh four oh seven as stated?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been amended. Member Sands?
Mr. President, now I move that we consider ordinance one oh four oh seven under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. As the discussion from the president pointed out, this ordinance has passed, and the certificate that comes from it needs to be filed by this Friday with the auditor's office. The auditor's office in the Athens County Court.
Member Bishop?
It's in kind of plain English. What does this mean?
It means that we've advanced the money to tear down the house, and now we're placing it upon the property owner's taxes, and we'll get reimbursed over a period of years if it's paid back to us.
Okay, we have already done this, or this ordinance?
It's already done.
It's already done.
It's, we have provided the money, and now this is, we're reclaiming it through this, thank you.
Something that the cities had to do a number of times in our past in very slip-prone areas where houses have been condemned and are a public hazard to safety and otherwise, so due to safety issues with administration.
And do we eventually get the money back?
Eventually, but I have seen it go to the point that the houses go up for auction, and when somebody buys them, they go for, yeah, we've seen that happen ten years later. Other comments? We're up to suspending? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance one oh four oh seven?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance, the rules have been suspended on ordinance one oh four. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance one oh four oh seven.
Second.
As we have discussed previously, this is an ordinance allowing the city to file on the tax duplicate our costs for removing a condemned house on the lot at seventeen and a half, South Lancaster Street. We, as you see, attached to your agenda, a contract with Richard Grimm Excavating. The work has been completed, the house has been removed, and the process for the city to be repaid for this amount, which is sixty-three hundred dollars plus seven hundred, once the revegetation is successful. And so, for seven thousand dollars to be repaid, we file it against the taxes of the owner of this house. And the auditor will make sure we get our money. I tried, if you'll notice, I was a little bit late. I was trying to find seventeen and a half, South Lancaster. I still couldn't find it, I'm sorry. I know it's not there anymore, but I still, I couldn't.
Must be something there.
I'm sorry?
It's across from the middle school.
Across from the middle.
It's up the alleyway.
Oh, the middle.
Up the alleyway, yeah.
Okay.
Lancaster goes all the way to Washington.
Yeah, but it's up.
Up that, there's an alleyway there, there that's.
I'm sorry. I was looking, I did go down by the middle school, but I was just looking at the houses in front.
Yeah, it's gone.
Okay.
The city had to do this a number of years ago on Grosvenor Avenue. Okay, all, is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance one oh four oh seven?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance one oh five oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a bus for the Athens Transit System and declaring an emergency. Member Patterson?
Mr. President, I move for suspension of the rules on one oh five oh seven.
Aye, a second. Sorry.
The reason for suspension is to get this bus into service as soon as possible, as well as the fact that a used bus has been located, and we need to move on it as quickly as possible in order to be sure that we're able to get it.
Further discussion on suspension of the rules only. All those in favor of suspending the rules on one oh five oh seven?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move for adoption for one oh five oh seven.
Second.
This ordinance is to spend up to forty thousand dollars for a used bus to replace an in-service bus for the university courtyard run. And in order to repair the buses that we currently had, it was going to cost at least twenty-five thousand, and so it makes good sense to purchase the new bus and use the other two, the parts combination, in hopes that we'll be able to get a backup bus ready to go as well. They are both still running, by the way.
Other comments? Previously at a committee meeting, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance one oh five?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance one oh six oh seven, an ordinance authorizing participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program. Again, Member Patterson?
Mr. President, I, that one oh six, I don't want to suspend. This is a standard cooperative purchasing program for transportation, and it's something that is required each year.
One of those housekeeping ordinances that we don't like to use the phrase for. Other comments? Ordinance one oh eight oh seven, an ordinance pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section one three.
One oh seven, do you want to?
I apologize, I jumped too far. Ordinance one oh seven oh seven, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the City of Athens and Columbus Division of Police. Member Bane?
Mr. President, I sent out, or Debbie did, thank you, Debbie, this, the information on this particular ordinance, and I'm sorry it hasn't gone through committee, I thought there was urgency on it, but I guess that, given the timing, there is no way it will be ready for Halloween. But having said that, I received a note asking for information, asking us to consider mutual aid agreement with Columbus with respect to the mounted officers. And so I did a bit of homework on this, and Captain Pyle kindly answered all of my questions. Very good meeting with him. He said that on Halloween, and this won't apply this year to the Columbus mutual aid agreement for the mounted officers, we pay transportation costs, which for Halloween would cost without Columbus, somewhere in the vicinity of nine hundred to a thousand one hundred. And then we also pay everyone on Halloween who is a mounted officer the salary, a hundred and fifty dollars. And we pay mounted for mileage, but the only time we pay salary is on Halloween. We, they, the need for this particular mutual aid agreement is that there are similar agreements with the sheriff's office, and they've been helping us, the sheriff's agencies, and so Columbus is the first city agency that's asked us for help, and that's why we're obliging. It's, Captain Pyle thinks they'll be maybe down here for one of the fests. And we do provide water, food, and housing for the animals. And I think Captain Pyle said about eight thousand to ten thousand a year is what the mounted officers cost us annually. And so I'm sorry this didn't go through committee, I thought it was urgent, and it wasn't, I mean, it's impossible now, but it's first reading. If you want to talk to me about it some more, we can have, I will have it on the agenda for end of September since the urgency has evaporated.
Is there further discussion on 107 anyway?
May I ask a question?
Sure. Member Bishop?
So, those costs that you just mentioned, that is part of this agreement?
No, those are the, the estimate of costs for the year for all mounted that come down is about eight to 10. For, I have no estimate for they would be paid if they come for Halloween.
But in other words, we do this, I mean, we do it anyway and this just formalizes the relationship?
Adds another couple of people to the, to the possible ranks.
Right, okay.
Other comments? Member Sands?
We do have mutual aid agreements with all or most of the neighboring forces, I believe, both police and fire. Is that...
Fire, we do, fire and wide. There's also a state mutual aid for fire, but I believe the mutual aid for law enforcement is really just with Ohio University Police Department and Sheriff's Department.
Right, well, we swear the men, remember, is Athens, police officers, so they're on the record.
Right, this came...
We ask for volunteers usually for the...
Well, as I recall, this came about because Columbus had requested some of our mounted to come up. We had requested some of theirs to come down and all the attorneys said, oh, we have to have a mutual aid agreement. And so, this is what we've, from a sample, we've hammered out, they have not approved it yet. So, I think Nancy's right, it isn't anything that's going to happen overnight nor guaranteed. But in order to have any exchange between the two departments, this is necessary.
So it would be a unique agreement.
Well, we hope it would be the basis for other agreements.
Other comments?
Numbers don't, they're not part of the ordinance, that's separate.
No, that's appropriated and then expended. Yes, just to understand how much it costs for that particular part of law enforcement in the city.
Right.
Now ordinance 10807, an ordinance pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 1332.32, electing to repay advertising revenues as part of gross receipts for a 5% franchise fee assessed to all video service providers within the corporate limits of the City of Athens and providing the law director with authority to notify video service providers of this council action and declaring an emergency. One of the more stranger worded ordinances I've ever read, introduced by member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move that we consider 010807 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that with the passage of Senate Bill 117, there've been some changes in the way cable franchising and video service providers are handled in the state of Ohio. If we want to retain our current percentage and to retain advertising as part of that, we have to actually pass an ordinance saying so, so that we can respond if they seek to change our current percentage or the advertising revenues. And that's going to go into effect on September 23rd, so that's why we need to suspend now.
Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending on 10807?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Move adoption of 010807?
Second.
And we just discussed this pretty thoroughly in committee and it'll just do what it says.
Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of 10807?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10907, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to negotiate a contract with the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District for hazardous waste pickup and declaring an emergency. Member Wild?
I move to consider ordinance 10907 under suspension.
Second.
Okay, the reason for suspension is I would like to get this hazardous waste pickup done this year, at least in this cycle year.
Is there further discussion on suspension of the rules only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 10907?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
I move adoption of 10907.
Second.
This is an ordinance to negotiate with the Athens Hocking Waste District to organize hazardous waste pickup within the city. The amount of money to be spent is about $15,000. We discussed this at least two times in some of my committee meetings, the idea of putting one of these together. I know it was brought up by Councilmember Bain and Councilmember Patterson. The fee, originally we were discussing was a little bit higher because we were going with a gross population and comparing it with about 20,000. Discussion with Ray Hazlitt earlier today is that we're down to 15,000 because we look at the student population as not having a lot of hazardous waste at this time. So, well, you know, it takes time to accumulate that stuff and they probably don't have that. So, what we anticipate is to, is to negotiate with the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District to facilitate this and probably even subcontract it out with the intention that they will get a feel for it, we will get a feel for it. We'll lance the volume of hazardous waste in the city and hopefully they'll do something similar to the county next year or the year after. Questions?
Yes, member Patterson?
Not really a question, just a comment. Paula Mosley has been working on this already and in contact with these people, so as soon as it is passed, she can move full speed ahead.
Yes.
Member Sands?
As envisioned, a hazardous waste pickup for citizens, if I had some batteries in my garage, I'd bring them to this place. Would I pay a fee or is the city paying this fee to get rid of this stuff?
The city is paying a fee.
Theoretically.
Okay, so...
I mean, you will pay the fee, it comes out of taxes.
Well, it's a tax dollar, certainly.
Well, it's coming directly from the dollar that we charge everybody on recycling. That's coming out of the garbage fund. There's no tax dollar. That's why it's limited to the City of Athens residents because they're the people that have been paying the money. Nobody else has.
Okay.
And that includes businesses that have been paying those fees.
So this will be a return on, one of the returns on this dollar?
Right.
I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Other comments? Member Patterson?
Actually, most of the models show a modest charge for businesses, free for residential and then some kind of a charge for businesses. So I suspect that may be the way that ours will look.
Member Bain?
I would like to note that we have this particular activity as part of the solid waste management district plan and I would like to see the county participate. I think it may be a little bit late, but I hope that they are able to do this and we can continue on and have this as a full-blown activity in the future. I think other counties that are more, a little bit behind the curve that we are in solid waste management have done it for years, so it's time. And I think everybody's, the one thing I would say in addition to supplement, what Carolyn Paul has said, many places charge a dollar per tire because tires are really a nuisance to dispose of. And so, I would say don't be surprised if that's one of the things that happens.
Member Wild?
This was brought to the Athens Hocking Waste District people earlier in the year, but part of the problem is they've already set up their budget and therefore, and we would hope next year that they would put it in their budget and we could see something like this going ahead in the future years. But this is just to get us started.
Are there any other comments?
Yeah, just a, just a quick note so you can visualize how it will be. Well, as I understand it, as other counties do it, and I'm not 100% sure it'll be that way, just a quick bit of public information, we'll have authorized hazardous waste hauler will be here and there will be no liability for us because they assume the liability, the citizens hand the materials to them, they take care of it and dispose of it. So it's not like we're assembling or accumulating a lot of potential problem, although, and it's not cheap to dispose of this material, these materials. So it'll, they'll probably be in suits. I was hoping we could all volunteer and, you know, maybe directing traffic or whatever if there's any traffic at all, but that's for later on.
We'd leave. Member Patterson?
The actual people collecting the materials will be suited up and ordinarily, the way the contract reads is that the, the person who comes with the hazardous waste does not even get out of their car. They pull out, they pop the trunk or hand the keys off and the hazardous waste is in the trunk and only those handlers ever touch it. But yes, they might need volunteers to be out there directing traffic, so we can all wear our safety team suits and be there.
Member Bishop?
Okay. And when this gets decided upon and promoted, it'll be clear what hazardous waste is, right? I mean, making it sound like nuclear waste, but, you know, batteries. And in other words, we'll educate the community about what's accepted, right?
I think we've been doing that a bit in our utility bills, haven't we?
Yeah, but still.
And you can get rid of that old nuclear waste out of your basement.
Good, I've been waiting for the opportunity.
You're in Homer Simpson, right?
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10907?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11007, an ordinance admitting the 2007 appropriation ordinance, authorizing the payment of a prior year expense and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Mr. President, following in footsteps of earlier, council members, I would like to move that we consider ordinance 11007 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This ordinance, in its title, says this is a prior, a payment of a prior year bill, a, two months' worth of gas bills from 2006, as I understand, gas fuel, petroleum fuel. So, and prior year bills...
Isn't this 13%? Is this where?
I know.
Did I say that?
2006.
No? Yeah, 110.
Okay.
Other comments on suspension only? Member Phillips?
I guess if it's this old, I don't understand why we're being asked to suspend. I don't know, how long have we had this? What's the urgency? Did we just receive the bill?
And, uh, council members know, we, for a good number of years, the city vehicle fleet has, has purchased gasoline at the university pumps because we moved ours out of the floodway. And these are a couple of bills from last summer that the city never received. We just got them and...
Good, maybe we can schedule future.
The publisher would like to get their money.
And I guess we're going to discuss whether lack of action on their part constitutes a suspension on our part. Member Wild?
So, I know this is not the appropriate time, $67,000, is that what I'm seeing?
Yes. Talk about how, how many vehicles we have.
Again, suspension only. Member Bishop?
Oh, suspension only.
Suspension only at this point.
All right, I'll save my question for the next round.
Okay, member Phillips?
I'm not sure if it's suspension-related.
Well, go a little ways and we'll decide.
Okay. We're appropriating from the unappropriated balance. We do approve a budget every year and we appropriate the money. I mean, we budget for fuel, right?
That's a good point.
So, I'm just curious, this seems like a lot of money if we hadn't budgeted for these bills.
The auditor has... Okay, in your court?
This isn't really my thing here, but just to jump in on that, when we budget, we, we look at what we spent last year. And since we didn't get these bills and didn't pay them last year, we looked at our bill, number one, and number two, fuel costs have, you know, risen...
Substantially.
Yeah, you know, just every month. And so, it's hard to budget that close for that. This seems like a lot of money, but as, as Jim said, this is a lot of departments and two months' worth of their fuel bills. We get a discount by purchasing from OU, so, you know, just to answer your question about, you know, why we have to...
Thank you, Kathy. Member Wild?
Okay, but this represents 1/6 of our total budget for last year, so we were in the black 1/6th last year if we didn't get two bills, two months' bills, is that what I was hearing here?
You know, that's getting way beyond suspension. That's awfully technical and a blindside-ish and, member Bishop?
Okay, I think this is suspension. I guess I want to go back to Debbie's question. If we just got billed, why are we in a rush to pay it? I mean, why do we have to suspend?
Well, it's very long overdue and it's going to take at least six weeks and another month if you don't. Now, that's, if that's a rhetorical question, there's your rhetorical answer.
Okay. Well, I was thinking, if they billed a year late, then they can wait six weeks.
They too have budget problems, but...
Well, I know, but if they had them, they'd wait a year to bill.
And you can choose to vote against suspension for that very reason, if you wish.
Okay.
Speaking as an auditor, pay the bills. You know, the fact is, this has come to our, you know, you haven't met for five or six weeks, this probably would have come up, you know, a little bit sooner than now. There's a lot of suspensions tonight. It seems like a lot of money, but if you break it down individually, we're talking a couple thousand per department. So when you're budgeting that way, it's not, you know, we're in the black, $2,000, that's nothing, you know, in the street department or however much is in there. You know what I mean? When you break it out by department, separate the budgeting issues, you know, as a lump, it's a big amount of money. But when you're budgeting each department, if you look at that ordinance, you'll see how many, how many departments are involved.
Look at the amounts for the different departments.
Yeah. So, you know, it's, like I said, this is not my issue, I didn't bring this forward, I, you know, but, you know, I just like to pay the bills.
And, you know, not to keep beating the same drum, but someone who runs an organization that sends out more than a million dollars in bills every month, it's possible to miss something. And when you've missed it for that long a period of time and you send it out, let's remember that we've had, to a certain extent, stolen goods in our treasury for two years that we've made interest on. So, you know, because somebody made a mistake is not necessarily reason to punish or not pay our bills. Member Wild?
And the issue of suspension, is this an argument for not having an August recess? Because we seem to have gone through quite a few suspensions this evening.
One could make that point. Any other points wishing to be made here? All those in favor of suspending the rules, and please give me a show of hands.
Aye.
You made it, counsel. The rules have been suspended. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 11007.
Second.
As we have discussed, this is a payment of two months' worth of gasoline bills from last, from 2006. We, these amounts were not billed to us until recently. If you look, this is a two-page ordinance. Page one is appropriating from the unappropriated balance from each of these accounts because this is billed as the gasoline is used in these different departments. This was, and this was from last year's budget, so I think that's why the auditor's saying it's actually an unappropriated bunch. Just would have been budgeted last year. And then, page two is authorizing the expenditure from those funds that matches the money we've just put in. And that adds up to a good deal of money. But from all, for all the arguments that have been stated, we as a city have traditionally made it a point to pay our bills promptly. And if for some reason they come to us late as this one has, we still are trying to pay it as promptly as possible.
Member Wild?
Okay, so if it's, if it's on their mistake, we don't pay late fees for this? Because I, I mean, utilities, we pay late fees if we don't get our utilities in downstairs.
We don't pay late fees.
Yeah, we do.
Well, I thought we quit paying late fees.
Not on this one.
Well, we better not after the argument I made, but the auditor is saying we do not pay late fees. Is that correct?
You know, I don't know. I haven't seen this.
Is there any interest?
No, there's no late.
I can't imagine. That, that's another issue that happens is also their billing is monthly. We didn't get a bill, I assume, the city, after not getting one for two months, that had three months on it. That's the other thing. You just get, we get a lot of bills, the city processes a lot, you assume you're caught up, so it's not like we got this bill with three, they just, they bill them individually. So no, I can't imagine they would charge us late fees because they didn't carry this balance over or we'd have paid it, you know, last year.
That's a mistake. Yeah. Member Wild?
I'm also aware that they were having trouble with some of their billing and the computer stuff. I use their DialNet and it, I didn't see my bill for three months. And when I went in and I said, where's my bill, they gave me twice the bill because they had double-jogged everything. they had double-jogged everything. And then I said, correct it please, and I didn't see it for another two months after that. So I'm aware of some problems on that end, too, okay?
And as an operator of an organization whose server went down a couple weeks ago, that can happen, you know.
But, all right, so just let me ask one question.
Number Bain.
This sort of bugs me a little bit about this. So we have money in these lines and so we wouldn't have had to suspend even though we did because we could use the money that's in the line except that it's a prior year bill, right? Is that the only thing that triggered it?
You have to authorize a prior year bill.
Okay, but other than that, we would have the money otherwise. Okay, and it was only a year and we didn't earn any interest on it that I know about.
Kathy, could you repeat that?
Oh, yes, at this point in the year, we would have had the money, you're right.
Right, I just want to make sure.
But because it is a prior year, exceeds the threshold.
On their part. All right. It's nice to quick them a little bit.
Well, I think we've done that.
Thank you.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11007?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Under resolution for third reading, Resolution 1307, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of Resolution 1307.
Second.
At our July 16th meeting, we received communication from the county auditor about their approval of some taxes, the inside millage. Up, we're getting five, can I say percent? No.
Five.
No.
A mill is a tenth of a percent.
So in the City of Athens, we have land which is actually in Athens Township and some in Canaan Township. So this sets the amounts of property tax that the city will receive from property in Athens Township, 653,000 and a few odd dollars. Canaan Township, 37, almost $38,000, for a total of 691,477 dollars. Without this ordinance, we would not be able to receive those property taxes.
Long story, you have that one. Motion second to adopt Resolution 1307. Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's been adopted. Announcements and other business. One of the things that I would like to point out is that at council's retreat, one of the things that was discussed was committee meeting nights and the desire for council to try to keep the meetings within a certain limit of time that has not grown on to past 6:00, 10:30 at night on a few occasions. We feel that it really prevents a lot of access. People can only watch this stuff so long and we do encourage people to watch their city government in action. So we have come up with a tentative schedule that on the second Monday of every month that we will have finance and personnel, planning and development, and transportation meet, and on the fourth Monday of every month, environmental services, city services, recreation and arts, and communication. And possibly finance and personnel would attempt to do their shorter meetings for just announcing one or two quick items that would have to be on the agenda. We recognize that there will be times that this is not going to work and that we will need to have a, one or another of those committees on opposite nights. And we also recognize that when there is one of those issues that would engender a lot of interest from the public and an issue that would need lengthy discussion, that we are even going to consider having that on a Tuesday or a different night of the week. But with that in mind, who's wishing to have a committee meeting? Debbie?
Yeah, I'll need planning and development next week. We have these annexations to talk about the possible development agreement, a revocable license request, and site plan review, at least.
Possibly a right of way.
Possibly a right of way, so we'll put miscellaneous on there for other things, too.
Very good. Jim?
Definitely finance and personnel. We'll talk further about at least one of the ordinances we discussed this evening and certainly more issues will arise by then.
Carol, was there anything for transportation that you're aware of?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Amy's absence.
We did it all tonight.
Yeah, we did. Most of what you do for the year was done tonight, to be quite honest about it. If anyone does need a short committee meeting for just one item or so to discuss because of a pending ordinance, that would also certainly be welcome, but let's just try to keep those that way. Member Wile.
I have a request. If that's possible, put the schedule of what we're talking about on the website or at least publish it someplace so people know that this is now a little bit a different format.
Okay. Can we try to have that done? Very good. Member Sands.
This is a question that's a little bit out of order. We discussed closing a street for the welcome-back picnic that city council is going to hold for students returning to the, I assume that neighborhood associations are on that same day. I haven't really heard anything about it.
I believe it is. I think Melissa's been putting it together now.
Here's the main thing.
Oh, I mean, they're put, you know, Arch West and the Congress Street will be in the same locations.
It's my committee instead of yours, but I could be around.
Okay. At the same date and time.
They're playing a little bit with the time. I think the Arch West one was at 10 o'clock or 11 last year and they wanted it 1:00 to 3:00 this year. So it'll probably be at the same time as the Congress Street one.
You can't do that.
And we're willing, cannot give them all in the parking lot to do it in this year because we had done it in the mornings in the other year, so we haven't run it out in the afternoon.
Whoops.
Other comments? Are there other announcements or other business before council? Member Patterson.
I just would like to remind people about the scheduled business fair on Saturday the 8th. We'll hope that the scattered showers avoid the time of the event, which is, is it 11 to 3? 11 to 3. And my understanding is that there is a large number of registrants for that and so it should be quite a good opportunity for our businesses to strut their stuff for the students and for artisans to have an opportunity to sell their wares.
I'm really sorry, I'm going to be out of state on that event. I think that's a great idea. Yeah, member Bishop.
Okay, city council took an interest in the lead issue when it was a lead paint issue and at that time, we were at least talking with the health department. And I just want to show the public that there are many lead pamphlets, especially in light of all the toy recalls that have happened, that the city-county health department has many lead materials to provide information for parents and even a coloring book for kids so they can learn to protect themselves also. So parents of young children may want to contact the health department and get some materials on lead education.
Thank you. Any other comments under announcements and other business? Item number nine on our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to speak on any city services or legislative items that have not been covered on tonight's agendas. Are anyone wishing to speak before council tonight? I've only seen members of the press, I would be kind of surprised. Welcome our new member of the press from the post. We're glad to have you here. Item number 10 on our agenda is an executive session. We will be going into executive session to discuss both labor negotiations and a possible real estate purchase or sale, one or the other, I guess.
You didn't know what was the concurver tonight?
Yeah, I guess not, I shouldn't do that. But after our executive session, we will do nothing more than adjourn. Do I have a motion to go into an executive session and-
Move to go into executive session, including council, the law director, the mayor, and the auditor.
Second.
Member Bain?
Yes.
Phillips?
Aye.
Sands? Patterson. Okay, we will take about 10 minutes for questions from council and then we will be in an executive session. Thank you.